Good morning, I call to order this regular scheduled meeting for the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, March 6, 2024. Please rise now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Henigan, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Matthew Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Susanna Ballard. Commissioner Joan De Zero.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Laird.
Here.
Commissioner Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Lonnie Stevenson.
Here.
Commissioner JP Thornton. Commissioner Jim Harris.
Here.
Vice Chair Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
Chairman David Diaz.
Here.
All right, seeing we need one of the alternates, Mr. Stevenson, would you please come to the dais and sign in, please? Let me know when you're signed in so we could continue the meeting. Okay, Mr. Gilbert, any announcements and updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since this body last met, since there was no cases on February 21st, since the last met on February 7th, the city council has taken action on a number of items. The corrugated metal siding discussion, that was before you, they did direct us to return back to you, which will be coming probably next month or early in, or yeah, sometime April, for changes to our code regarding allowing metal siding in commercial districts. 700 London Bridge Road, the plan development reason was approved. The 6701 Highway 95 Commercial PD Concept Plan was approved up by the airport and the Kaowa Ponds property, which approximately 10 acre of city property at industrial and, or I'm sorry, Kaowa and US 95, that land sale, the bid was awarded by the council. And finally, I think the biggest item was the text amendments to the subdivision ordinance was approved, which that didn't come before the planning commission because it wasn't part of the development code, a separate part of the city code. But what that does going forward is preliminary and final plats effective on March 27th will fall under the staff review process and will no longer be a public hearing item. That was a recent allowance by Arizona state statute for cities to be able to do that. So that's, oh, I have one last, one other organizational comment to make. The, I was informed a few minutes ago that some of the individuals that appeared for the public hearings today in this planning commission meeting were here for the Shinute cell tower location. I do want to state that the Shinute Drive cell tower location was, application was pulled by the applicant last, let's see, was it last week? Several days ago, and that is not on the agenda as a result, and there'll be no discussion on that whatsoever. So anyone who's here for this Shinute location, that application is not on the agenda today. So that's just clarification.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, we all received the minutes from the last meeting. Any deletions, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Commissioner Medley, you need a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner De Zero. Any other discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this process. City staff will present each item. There will be some time for the commission to ask questions of the staff and the applicant will have an opportunity to present their case to the commission. Once that is done, we will open a public hearing to give community members an opportunity to ask questions or provide input. I ask that anyone who wishes to speak limit their times, their trips to the microphone to once per item and keep their comments to less than five minutes. Please stay on point and refrain from discussing subject matter not pertinent to the item being considered. There will be an opportunity for the public to address the commission about other topics later in the meeting, and I'll explain that when that time comes. After public testimony is taken, we will close the public hearing and bring the item back to the table for the city staff's recommendation, further discussion amongst the commissioners, and eventually a motion to either approve or disapprove. And thank you for adhering to this meeting protocol. All right, the first item today is ID number 244174 approval, I'm sorry, ID 244161, adopt resolution number 2402 approving the additional use permit to allow a placement of 800-foot monopole telecommunications structure and related 40-foot by 40-foot screened ground equipment enclosure on city-owned property located at 1867 Walnut Drive, tract 2302, partial A, in a single-family residential R1 district. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start off with some of the slides here to give everybody an idea of where the tower is and what it's going to look like. This proposed tower, which is through Young Design Corporation and TowerCom, is proposed to be located on the Mulberry Wastewater Treatment Plant property. It's a city-owned property, it's 11.37 acres in size, and the, this overview kind of gives you the general location, so it's north of Walnut and somewhat east of Highway 95. The zoning of the property is R1, which is why this is before you, has a conditional use permit. You can kind of see in the background, I'm sorry, let me go back here. You can kind of see in the background the wastewater treatment plant to the northeast of the proposed location next to the pond. These coverage maps here, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail because the applicant is present with their, with their full team regarding the details of radio, radio frequency sighting, but these are two very important pictures on here that were provided by the applicant. When you look at these, at these coverage maps, red is good, the green that you see is medium quality and blue is poor signals. And there are, as everybody knows, there are areas in Hav- all over Havasu which have areas, depending on which carrier you have as well, because they come off different towers, you have areas where you have poor signal, signal drop, or you have maybe one or two bars. And that's evidenced by these radio frequency diagrams. If you look at the left, there's a lot of blue and green, not a lot of red in the vicinity of the tower, which is just here. If you look on the right, all the blue goes away and it's vast majority of it's red and the remainder parts are, are green, which is mid-quality. So I just wanted to point that. The tower, here's a overview of the site plan, you see the full treatment facility there, and it's not just that narrow strip to this, this area down here is also city-owned property right here. So this is a very large 11.3 acre tract, which is bigger than a lot of the, the school properties around town that have cell, cell towers on them in R1 districts. Let me advance it one more slide. The pad, the ground level visible portion of the site is going to be 40 feet by 40 feet with an eight-foot CMU block wall, decorative wall, and that's going to contain all the ground mounted equipment for the tower operations. There will be landscape requirement around the perimeter in addition, that's required by code of at least five feet. In advance, one more slide. This is the height of the tower and what it's going to look like. A number of options were, were looked at regarding screening, using the, using the screened antenna array look, which is just basically a barrier around them, as opposed to like a fake palm tree or fake other type of, of tree look would look more realistic than it, because there's four locations on the tower for co-locates. One of them's for, the lowest ones could be for city 911 police fire improvement as well. So the top three would actually be commercial co-locates and be very difficult to make a scenario like this look like a realistic palm tree, and that, that was why the idea for just having the screened barrier around the, the co-locate attachments would be the most appropriate. So that's what that looks like. Okay. Now I want to go into a number of, number of issues here before I turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, for the next step. Cell towers, since the 20th century ended, cell towers have become very significant utilities. In the, in the previous century, landlines were very popular. Landlines are becoming extinct quickly and everybody needs cell service. It is a utility, it is a necessary utility today, and it's not unlike having to cite a, an electric substation in a neighborhood to provide electric service to houses as the community grows. As Havasu grows, there's a need to provide better cell service or phone service to not only the residents here, but also to all the visitors in the community. I want to highlight the, the item here for, let's see. It's on page 3 of 5 of your staff report. The proposed use is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and the applicable specific plan. The general plan under chapter nine, guiding principles for a functional and efficient system of public facilities and community services, goal PF.1.3 states, work with non-municipal service providers to improve and expand service levels. So our general plan encourages the city to work with the different utility providers, of which this is one, to attempt to expand service for the benefit of the community. Regarding development code, requirements to be met for approval of a new telecommunications facility. Let's see here. There's a number of factors here that are listed in your staff report. I won't go into great detail on the staff analysis because there's a number of items here, I'm not just going to read them all out, but they've been, they've been online for a week since the packets were uploaded to the website. Then there's also the requirements for approval of a conditional use permit in, in the R1 district. Now, another factor I want to address is, because there's going to be a lot of comment about, I expect, since we have a lot of members of the community here, about cell towers not belonging in residential districts. The reason that was done and anticipated by the development code and the, and the general plan is because a lot of the large tracts where cell towers can be located are in R1 zones, and a lot of Havasu is R1, and if you want service in a lot of different parts of the community, that you have to place them in R1. There, I have four examples I want to give. The high school has a tower, which is R1. The Jamaica Elementary School has a tower, which is in the R1 zone. The city property on Cisco has a, has a cell tower also in, in an R1 zone. And finally, the school on Buena Vista as well has a cell tower. These are all larger properties, many of them are smaller than the 11.3 acres that we're talking here. Another factor that I want to point out is we were looking at the impact of the tower on lake views. Going to go back to the zoning map here. Here's the outer boundary of the wastewater treatment plant facility, which is 11.3 acres. The lakes over here, so all the view of the residents that are to the west are not impeded by this tower being located there. And the residents that live up slope here to the northeast of the facility would be looking about a quarter mile away over the top of the tower. I mean, it'll still be in the view angle, but it's a great distance over the entire wastewater treatment facility for the tower right here, and then you have the lake down here. So this particular location where the, the tower is proposed to be has a minimal impact on views from up slope, I just will point that out. Mr. Chairman, I, that completes my staff report. Again, I'm not a radio frequency engineer, and they have their whole team here to discuss the act, the need for the tower in this particular location.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up to the commissioners, I have a couple of questions. I went out to the site to look at it, and there's a, like a gravel dirt driveway in a large flat area, then you go up another way, and there's another large, which, which, where is this tower going to be put? On the first initial flat area or the elevated flat area?
It's going to be, this is the best drawing they used right here. If you see where this scrub is on the overhead, the tower's going to be right about here at the east, on the east edge of the scrub. In fact, one of the engineering requirements is that the scrub be cleared out.
Okay, all right. And then the other question is approximately how far from the, from the, is it Cypress Park that's out there? How far, how far is it from the park? Approximately? Because I didn't see the park where I was standing, I mean, there's a big hill there, and there's been some talk about it's too close to a park, but I didn't, I don't know if that was miscommunication by some people in the community or whatever.
Hold on here. There we go. Oh, it's so adorable, okay, I was looking for the green color. Distance would be approximately a quarter mile.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners on this item? Mr. Commissioner Stevenson?
So the, the four previous towers that you mentioned, the high school, Jamaica, Cisco, and Buena Vista, what is the height of those towers that we've already been approved?
I do not have that information, the applicant may be able to go into more detail.
Any other questions? All right, seeing is the applicant here? Wish to present to the commission, please approach the podium and state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman, commissioners. My name is Linda Greise with Young Design. My last name's Greise, G-R-I-C-E. So first I'd like to just give you maybe a brief introduction to cell phones. There, 61% of all adults in the U.S. have a cellphone, but no landline. There's 240 million emergency calls made every year out of the population of about 350 million. That means two out of three of us are making an emergency call every year. 80% of those emergency calls are made by a cellphone. So the cellphone works through electromagnetic waves. Those waves are electric and magnetic energy moving together. It creates an electromagnetic, electromagnetic spectrum. So a wave goes, it cycles from an up to down and back up, that's one wavelength. So the electromagnetic spectrum goes from like electricity all the way over to X-rays and nuclear radiation. Well, there's a small section, a portion of that that is used for communications. That's where we have television, AM, FM radios, cell phones, the Wi-Fi in your house, your baby monitors, your vacuum cleaner that runs off your Wi-Fi in your house. All of those things that communicate without a wire are in that spectrum that's used for communication. So in the United States, the spectrum looks like this, it reads like a paragraph. At the top you have uses that are marine uses, you have all those big blocks of blue that are television, and then you get down to the lower area where you have light purple, and that's your cellphone communication. So you can see that cellphone is just a very small portion of the radio frequency spectrum. So how's a cellphone work? You have like a telephone, like we used to all have a landline, it connects to the central communication, the switch goes off to your cellphone tower. So you have a cellphone tower, and then you have your cellphone. So your antenna on your tower sends a signal to your cellphone, and you can hear. If I want to talk back, I have an antenna in my cellphone that connects the signal going back. Both sides have an antenna, both sides are transmitting radio frequency. So what, what are the Gs? The Gs stand for generation. So the first generation, we had voice over a cellphone. The second generation, we were able to text. Third generation, we could use pictures and apps. Fourth generation, now we can have, we have video. Fifth generation, you can play games. I mean, I think that's all people do with 5G, but it's faster speeds. So 6G is being developed, and it's even faster. So the Gs are going to continue, 5G, 6G, down the road, we're going to see 7G. So the way a network works is you have a macro site, which is a tall tower. That's what we have in this case, a tall tower. It provides a signal out to a very large area. Let's say it provides a signal out for a half a mile radius. So if you're within that, you can get a signal. Then you have small cells, which usually go on light poles. Those light poles are about 30 feet tall. The signal is reduced in height. So in general, to use small cells to cover the same area as a macro, you need somewhere between 25 and 80, depending on the carrier and the antenna that they're using. So you would have a lot more cellphone sites if you have to cover an area with just small cells. There's also something called a strand mount that goes on like a utility line. Those are even a smaller space, they cover less area, you would need almost 300 to cover the same area as a macro. So it becomes really impractical to try to use those alternative technologies. In Lake Havasu, there's a lot of area in the community that there are no light poles, no distribution lines, so all of those poles would have to be erected. So in order to cover the same area as the macro, you'd be putting up, say, 50 poles out there to cover the same area. So it's really not a practical thing to do, and for the carriers it'd be quite expensive. So the way that a cellphone tower works is they're usually three-sided. In a circle, you have 360 degrees, if you divide that by three, you need to cover, each sector would cover 120 degrees. The antennas are made where they only cover 65 degrees. The technology just is not there on the macro side to have a different type of antenna. So it covers 65 degrees. That means that there's a whole portion over here that's not covered. So in order to get the network to work, you have to have different towers pointing the same direction. So you folks might be in an area that's where you can, where you're covered, you have coverage, but you can see the tower, and you have no coverage or spotty coverage because the antennas are not aimed that way. So you have that type of issue to deal with in placing your towers. In addition, the antennas only cover about 10 to 12% on the horizontal. So Lake Havasu is particularly difficult because of the severe slope here. So trying to cover uphill at 10% and downhill at 10% makes it really difficult to, and the way that part of that's taken care of is by increasing the height. So the other thing that is difficult in Lake Havasu is because of the way the city's laid out, the lots are deep and narrow. So once you have a setback, like I have an example here where the red lines are the setbacks, the usable space for a tower is the yellow piece down the middle. Putting a tower in the front door of a business just isn't practical. So the number of places that a cellphone tower can go in town is very restricted, very limited. So what you really have is city property, parks, schools, big box areas like the grocery store, the Home Depot, Lowe's, that, those type of uses, maybe, maybe on the golf course. But it's very, very limited on where sites can go because of the setback, setbacks and the way that the city is laid out. So the tower height, if you can see that, you know, if you're trying to cover an area and you've got 10 degrees, 12 degrees to work with, as you decrease the height of the tower, then you can cover less in your radius. So the taller radius gives, and gives the macro tower more coverage in distance away from it. If the tower's lowered and it's two-dimensional, so if you lower the tower by half and you're only covering a quarter of a mile instead of a half a mile, well, now you need four towers to cover the same area. So the, the trade-off is more towers or a little taller in height. So in this particular area, when we started looking, we first look at all of the towers that are out there. These are all registered towers in the area that have an antenna. Those sites, none of them are really a commercial use that another carrier like Verizon or AT&amp;T, T-Mobile could go on. So a, a new tower's needed, and we have an RF engineer here that will give you a little bit more of an explanation about the actual signal and how that works. But we looked for sites that were large enough to meet the setbacks. There's the city property and there's, oh, a church. I was unable to get to lease terms with the church. So this city property was the one and only place that we were able to find that would work. So that's what I have on this portion. I have an RF engineer here that can provide more information specifically about why this location and the actual coverage and how it'll improve. But do you have questions of me?
Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
So is this something that as the carrier company looks at because this is complaint-driven, or is this just part of a larger infrastructure because, based on the growth of the town for the addition of the towers?
I, I don't know that for certain, they never share that information, but the carriers, when you see the, the RF propagation maps, you can see the lack of coverage in the area, and I think the engineer can go more detail. Oftentimes, the engineer can see that there's going to be a lack in coverage, or they, they also, if, there may not be complaints, but the carriers are able to see how many calls get dropped, what their what their coverage is, so they know they have poor service.
Any other questions? Does the RF engineer want to address the commission? Yeah, please state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Tyler Ross. Roger Oscar Sierra Sierra. Sorry, just wanted to test that there. Again, my name is Tyler Ross. I'm here on behalf of TowerCom to discuss the necessity of this tower. This package was created by Steve Kennedy, who is not able to be here today. So I'll just clarify again, I'm not Steve Kennedy. You'll see that he has 34 years of experience that he created this. If that were done by me, that would mean I'd have to have started this at about two months old. So that is not the case. So why do we build a cellphone tower? With every tower, the two main objectives are coverage and capacity. And capacity is looking at how many users can we handle on a tower at a given time? There's three different sectors typically on these macro towers, such as this one. And each antenna is only going to be capable of handling a certain number of users at any given time. Coverage is how far out can this antenna reach? How many people in any base can we go with that? And this could be reaching new areas or just providing better coverage in existing areas. I like to give the example of, if you're going to your favorite restaurant or coffee shop, a lot of these places offer free Wi-Fi now. And Wi-Fi, it's the same principle as this. You go there, you get on the Wi-Fi, it works great. But then you're there during the busy time, 20 customers show up. They all want to get on the Wi-Fi. And suddenly you look down and you notice that the news or the favorite cat video that you're trying to watch is just circling and spinning, and it's not loading up. Well, that's a capacity issue. The coverage part of it is, you can use it anywhere in the shop. Sometimes you're lucky, you can use it right out front of the shop. But that's kind of the coverage and capacity logic there. And it's going to apply exactly the same to a macro tower, just on a bigger scale. Now, it, it was mentioned a bit before, but I'll just give some statistics here. But why is this site important? Approximately 96% of Americans own a cellphone today. Approximately 57% of American homes are exclusively relying on cellphones without a landline anymore. And about 84% or more of 911 calls are now made with a wireless device. Now, this is the proposed site, named Daytona by Verizon. But this is, I apologize, do you have the, do we have the wrong? There were, there were two packages up there. This should be for Daytona. I believe that one is going to be for Indigo. I was going to say that, that height didn't sound very right. So this one is going to be 100-foot monopole. Again, we have a 95-foot centerline with the antennas. You saw in the previous pictures that the antennas were at the very top of this pole for the anchor tenant, who is Verizon, with the possibility of adding two more future tenants. Now, again, why here? You'll see in the propagation models that I'm going to go over here in just a minute, that the sectors are currently either overloaded in capacity or coverage is just poor in general. Here's a Google Earth screenshot of the proposed site that we've already seen. Now, this is looking at the surrounding Verizon sites that currently exist. Our proposed site is to the south there in green. And you can see to the east and west. Every site is approximately a mile and a half to, to, a little over two miles away. We've gone ahead and included, on the next line item on the agenda for today, the other site as well that's up to the top right in yellow is the other proposed site, Indigo. But we went ahead and included that just to help give a good visual of what it's going to be like if both antenna towers are approved. So Cell Mapper is crowdsourced data. This is real data from real users. And what you're looking at here is what's called an RSRP plot. That's, excuse me, reference signal received power. And what we're seeing here is, if you look at the top left, you're going to have different levels in dBm, that's decibel per milliwatt. And essentially, anything less than 106 decibels is not going to be good coverage unless you're standing out in an open field with your phone up in the air. It, it's going to be very poor signal coverage. So you can see in the dark green, in the, in the red circle, this is kind of where our tower would propose to cover. You can see a lot of the dark green there, which is already less than neg 106. So people driving by in their vehicles are already experiencing poor coverage quality. And a lot of dropped calls essentially from a lack of good coverage. This is more data from another one called UCL. This is looking at the 4G data. Again, you have different colors here, but same principle. This is now, it's kind of hard to see, but this also shows some plots on the buildings and residential areas surrounding. But you have now even more orange and red where you're not getting good coverage and penetration into buildings. So now people are not only suffering from receiving and making phone calls and data in their vehicles, but it, it's really not good for them, for those surrounding in the building penetration as well. Now, this is, Open Signal is another one. And this one, I'd just like to note that you look at the roads in the similar area, and you see a lot of just empty spaces between all the different boxes. And what that's going to kind of signify is that we're not getting data because of such poor connection in these areas. So users are just essentially dropping or not having any working calls or cellular service in those areas. This is a Verizon-model RSRP plot. And in the, again, in the circled area, we can see the yellow is going to signify decent coverage of quality signal for in-a-vehicle. Greens for indoor, and then red would be the on-street, having to hold your phone out in an open area. It looks decently okay on the roads, even though I provided data that shows otherwise. And the reason for that is, is what this doesn't account for is capacity. The coverage is there, but what this doesn't show is the capacity concerns. You have multiple towers surrounding the area that are constantly doing handoffs with each other, and it's really killing the capacity for the other towers. And I'll, I'll get more into that in just a moment here. This is now the RSRP with the proposed site. And you can see that it's nearly all solid green now. A lot of the yellow disappeared, there's no red. And then lastly, if both sites were to be approved, this is now the RSRP data with that. Essentially, you almost go to all green. You're going to have good indoor and building coverage all around you. Now, this here is going to be what I spoke of earlier. This is your best server coverage. What this is telling us is what sector of each tower is handling, what you could expect them to handle in any given area on the map. So if we were to look in our blue circle again, currently, it, it's a bit of a mess. This is what really tells the story of capacity, where you see there's a lot of splotchy purple, the, the blue. You have different sectors that are just kind of unexpectedly handing off between each other, depending on where you're at. So essentially, you could cross the street, and one tower's going to hand off to the other. And the problem with that is, is that's going to increase dropped calls and reduce quality for those customers in this area. If we have the proposed tower, now we have what we like to see, a lot more solid color for each sector to find out. There's not going to be unpredictable handoffs between the different sectors. And then again, with the second proposed site up to the top right there, again, you're going to have clearly defined, you're not going to have the splotchy mixes of colors that are going to give unpredictable quality of service to those Verizon customers in the area. I'll speak quickly about this, but it, it was brought up that there's a spectrum for RF energy. And you, on that spectrum, you have ionizing and non-ionizing energy. Ionizing is the dangerous kind of energy, such as X-rays and gamma rays. That's when you go to the dentist, they have to do the X-rays. They put the big lead vest on you, they step around the corner, they, they take the picture. That's because overexposure to that can be very dangerous. Now, RF energy that we're working with is in the non-ionizing category. And what that means is the byproduct of exposure to that is heat, heat dissipation. It's the same thing with a light bulb. If you ever have your cellphone up to your, up to your ear when you're talking for a long time, you notice it gets hot. That's because the receiver, it's getting heat from, from RF exposure. I would just like to state for the record that in any other health-related issues, this is about all I'm going to speak about with this, but any other health-related issues, we fall under the FCC's Telecommunications Act of 1996. So really, any other health concerns with this cannot be used in the decision-making. And again, I don't want to over-bore you guys with this, but there's different limits. The FCC has set, we have occupational and general public limits.
Excuse me, excuse me. Guys, we need to respect the speaker, and you'll have an opportunity to talk when it comes to all of the public or a public comment. Thank you.
So again, there's a safe value that the FCC has determined, and we're well within that value. There's an occupational limit that's at a reduced, so, so the FCC has set a limit. The occupational limit is tenfold less than that. And that's if, let's say, you had a tower that was built on top of a rooftop, for example. Well, the rooftop also has air conditioning units. These are workers that would go up there that aren't working on the antennas themselves, but they could be exposed to more energy up there because they're closer to the antennas. But let's say, like, a, a AC technician has to go up there. They're going to be in an area that would be tenfold lower than what the FCC's limit is for, for safe exposure. And then we get to what's the general public limit is. And that's going to be, for example, with this tower, we have, we have the compound at the base of the tower. If you were right outside the compound as a member of the public, you're going to be at a factor of 50 times lower than the FCC's recommended exposure limit. And I apologize, it's not in the slide here, but the exposure limit for anyone interested is going to be 1.6 watts per kilogram. And this is the same thing I talked about here. This is the tower, you have the shelter compound at the bottom, just showing that the power levels are considerably lower at the ground than they would be up at the actual top of the antennas. And then again, 10% is the general public standard on the outside of these compound walls here. And you have other barriers, gates, and signage that would prevent them access to, to getting inside to the occupational limits. And this, this is more footnotes, just kind of explaining the same thing. Again, I don't, I don't want to read this word-for-word to you guys. General public and occupational limits. Now, there was mentioned that there's going to be two more carriers that could possibly go on this tower. So we went ahead and we took a look at two of the other major wireless carriers. So this is AT&amp;T. And I'll just note that this is actually considerably even more poor than what Verizon's currently offering in the area. So for anybody that has AT&amp;T, this is going to be the same thing. You have your dark greens that are just going to show not even ideal coverage if you are outside of your car, let alone being in your car. It, it's going to be a lot of poor quality service. And then same with the UCL. And here, we just have a whole bunch of missing data on the roads, on that, on that main road there, which is just not going to be good for those customers, dropped calls or, or not even failed to even make a call. And then now here's T-Mobile. And I'll just kind of go through these here. And then you can see a lot of red there. That's, that's going to be ideal for on-street, but that's clearly right in the middle of a residential area there. So if you're in that house, I, I don't even know that you'd be able to get a call out. And then Verizon does have this listed as a capacity site, but that doesn't negate the fact that it also clearly needs to have better coverage as well. We've shown the three different crowdsourced databases showing that the carriers are, these three major carriers are lacking in the service area. And that is all I have for this presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? To the staff? Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, I'll go. So the biggest thing is going to be the height. You've proposed to put this tower at the lowest elevation of what this site is because this site falls tremendously from, from the high side on the north-east side to the, to the tower location on the south, on the southwest corner. So I assume you're having to go 100 feet up to have some coverage at the top of that hill. So I guess the question is, is why are we building it at the bottom of the hill to affect those residents along Spruce Drive and Uphill versus putting it on the Uphill side and going up where it doesn't affect the views of those people that are in the more flatland area above it?
Now, as far as the specifics of why the tower's located exactly where it's located, it's going to be more up to real estate. As RF, we get, we get to throw search rings, which is essentially ideal spots where we'd like it to go. And I can let Linda speak more on that here.
Okay.
Sure. When we, excuse me, when we place a cell tower, that use needs to not impede existing uses. If we move it up, up further on the city property, it limits the city's use of their existing intended use. So we worked with folks that run that facility to get a location that suited their future needs as well as providing a place for the tower.
Any other questions? All right, this is, thank you, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to the public now. If any from, from the public would like to address the commission on this item. Yes, sir, please post podium, state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name's Dean Baker. My last name is B-A-K-E-R. And I know you guys have a big problem, you know, we need cell service in the city as we grow. But the location that's chosen is, I, you know, we, this location off of Walnut is probably one of the nicest areas in the city with our gorgeous Cypress Park. Some areas have got buried power lines, nice homes. I live on the upslope at Cypress Drive, which Mr. Gilbert said it wouldn't affect our views, but I'm on the Cypress and Oak. I have a multimillion-dollar home there, and the home's really not that great. It's, the view is what I paid for. And of course, that concerns me. But another thing that concerns me is, when I moved in, I knew that location was R1, okay? So to take, and I'm sure the cell companies are going to lease the land from the city, and there's going to be money exchanged. So why is it going into R1 area? It should be going into a commercial zoning area. And there's a lot of commercial zoning areas. And I'm sorry, the lady that spoke here said that you can't put these cell towers in commercial properties because of how big they are and the setbacks. Well, the footprint's not that big, and you could go to the city and get a special use permit to put these in proper zonings like commercial. Also, another site that might be considered is Contact Point, which is an eighth of a mile away from where the proposed site is. And that's a huge state facility with a lot of acreage. Also, some of the information's a little inaccurate. That red circle, they say there's not very good cell service. I live right there, and my cell never drops. And I also have Verizon that runs my entire home on internet or on cell service. So I have no cabling or anything. It's all on Verizon, and I can stream and do everything. So I think this, that as good stewards for the community at the commission here, we need to consider, this is, technology is going to continue to grow. So do we have one of these on every single tract in town? Or do we do, like the lady said, macro cell towers? We have above-ground poles all throughout the city. Maybe we should start thinking about going that way due to the macro cell towers. So I believe it's going to have an effect on the neighborhood. And I hope we, you can consider this, and maybe we can look for another, another site. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a, is there a Mr. Glenn Mishkin? Do you want to speak on this? Okay, please approach the podiums. First and last names, spell your last name for the record.
Steve Z-
Steve Zabo, S-Z-A-B-O. I live on Hickory Drive. We used to have really poor cell service for years. I've lived there for 22 years. Um, and it was really bad. Then I moved to Verizon, hey, it all went away and they're complaining about this. That location is in the, a valley. It's actually the lowest point of the property. That's why they have to go 100 feet. Is that really going to make a difference, the 100-foot? Because it is literally in a valley, the lowest point. You see towers on hills, correct? Just questioning that. Okay, property values, nobody brought up property values. Right in my backyard now, this 5G tower that's going to hold up to three different partners. He talked about the RF. Was he talking about RF with just their stuff on it or fully loaded? Fully loaded, that, I'm asking. Is he talking about RF?
He'll be able to address.
Okay, and that's, I just want to know if that mean, because it's not going to stay with just one person, that city on there. They're going to sell the hell out of that thing. Excuse my French. Um, listen, we're bombarded with radio frequencies, like she said, all over our house. Now we're going to have it right in our backyard? I know you conspiracy theories, blah, 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 but oh, who got the vaccine? You heard about this 5G thing? Micro sites. Yep, everywhere. Okay, it's put in a valley. Why don't they put it on a hill? Let's see. Um, yeah, that, that's really the points that I had to make. I mean, I live there. I don't want this thing in my backyard. Would any of you, if you lived at, especially that site, that guy that's going to be right across the street from it or right up on top of that hill that looks down on it? Because there's houses right there too, up over, you know? Would you put it in your backyard? That's my question. Would you vote for the yes if it was going to go right in your little location? Just my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please approach, uh, the podium. State your, state your first and last name, please, and spell your last.
My name is Robert Dean. I live at 1810 Hickory Drive. My concerns are in health safety. I have Agent Orange from Vietnam. I listen to the same people as I just listened to here today. They can't completely tell me all the health hazards for this tower that close to my home. That is my concern. I live with this every day. I was told by the United States government that I would have no problem. I fight this problem every day. I have so many health concerns. I can't even walk, I fall down. I don't want to live the rest of my life with my wife on that property and still have health concerns because he can't tell me without a shadow of a doubt that there will be no health concerns to me. What I don't understand is if we build this tower higher, can't we get more reception? Why does it have to be right here in the city? They sprayed Agent Orange on us in the jungle so we could walk through them better. They didn't tell us. He's still not answering my question. I don't know what the health concerns are. I don't want this tower in my backyard. I've lived on the same street as Steve for 17 years. If I have to move out of this city, I own eight homes in this city. I don't ask the city for anything. I don't want this tower behind me. Simply put. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. I'll repeat myself. First and last name, spell your last name.
James Henderson, H-E-N-D-R-S-O-N. Thank you, uh, for having me. Uh, just a few things. What I just witnessed was a sales pitch.
Would you please raise your, raise your.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm, I'm not a public speaker, never do this sort of thing. But I just witnessed what I kind of feel is a sales pitch. Not a very good one. They've had years to prep and plan for this. They do it every day. These citizens are here with a week or seven or nine days. I see these giant towers around town here and when I travel other places, I don't seem to see these 150, 200-foot towers or 100-foot towers that often. They're usually in very rural areas or the desert where the signal can go from two to 25, 30 miles and they pick up those cars traveling along. The city may, or the commission, you may want to start considering the, the macro sets or towers or, and there's plenty of poles in this town with power poles behind people's houses. And I don't know if that's the answer. I don't know if any of these are the answer. But I think what they propose to you today is the cheapest for a solution that may not even be needed. They talk a lot about the cars driving by and losing signal. I, I don't know if we all need signal 24/7, period. Most of us have signal at our houses. We don't have issues, um, that are terrible, that we can't deal with. Um, if we do, we can get, uh, Allo or somebody else and then run wifi through our home and run our phones through that. There's always a solution and I don't know if these giant towers are the solution. Once they go up, they're probably never coming down. So I just, you know, would encourage you to take your time and, and think about this because a step forward could be four or five steps back. And, and there may be better solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the commission on this? Yes, sir? Same drills, first and last name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Don Doster, D-O-S-T-E-R, resident of Lake Havasu City. The other question I have of many of these, uh, cell sites and so forth. I looked up many, uh, things on the interweb and they describe the devaluation of property anywhere around any of these cell sites. And the Journal of Real Estate has done a study that it can devalue anywhere from 2.46% all the way up to 20%. So do we really have to consider the folks that live within this city and also the cell towers? As technology develops, as these people probably are more involved with that, will towers be needed? And who is going to maintain those towers when they start getting abandoned or who's going to remove them? I've lived in this city for 17 years myself and I have never had a problem with cell service anywhere in this city where I've had no cell service. I've gone outside of this city where it's desert and they have cell service. So I have to question who originally started all this to say we need studies for cell sites within the city of Lake Havasu City? And then my question is, why did they do this? And what kind of funds are involved with this? Who is making money on this? I have to question a lot of things involved with these cell towers. There was a cell tower which you mentioned on Chanute that was planned. A lot of us in the neighborhood did not want that. And now that's a dead issue for now, I guess. But is it going to be reinstituted on a piece of property behind a residence? We live in a nice area ourselves on the south end. So I question these things and I would like to have some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public like to address? Please state your first and last name, spell your last name for the record.
Tall guys. My name's Scott Dewitz, D-E-W-I-T-Z. And thanks panel. I just want to bring to your attention that, um, the gentleman mentioned the FCC guidelines of, uh, 1996. And those guidelines actually don't hold water anymore because they were sued and lost in the second highest court in the country. And I just want to put that on the, on record that, uh, none of the FCC findings, again, are accurate. And, uh, there's more study to be done as far as health effects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, please approach the podium, first and last names, spell your last name.
My name's Dylan Teschler, it's T-E-S-C-H-L-E-R. I live right across the street pretty much from where this is going up. I am totally against it. I moved to this neighborhood, as others said, for great views, great location between Rotary Park, between Cypress Park. You know, we walk the neighborhood all the time. I have a growing family myself and this to me is, is heartbreaking really. Um, I don't want to see it go up at all. I have cell service, I have Verizon. I have no issues whatsoever. I also have Verizon running my house as well with wifi. Um, no issues. We watch, you know, Netflix, we play games, whatever we got to do, no issues there. So I don't know, I don't think there's any complaint behind this as far as service goes. I think it's just an exchange of money. I know too, I speak on behalf of several neighbors who could not make it here. In my neighborhood, there's a lot of snowbirds, people who do travel a lot, a lot of older folks who unfortunately could not make it here today. And I know that they are all against this as well, literally going down my whole street. And I know that we put together a petition. I don't know if that was presented or, or how that's going about, but several of us had signed a petition against this movement. Property values also concern, again, perfect location between Cypress and Rotary Park to live, beautiful residential area. I also read a lot too online about how everybody says you should be a quarter mile away from this for safety. We already discussed the health concerns and issues that we all see with that, but a quarter mile is pretty decent area and not right across the street from me. And so me, having a growing family, continuing to grow, I don't want to see it go up. Thank you.
Thank you. One time, sir, you already been up, but we'll have, any other, anyone else? All right, does the applicant want to address any of the concerns that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir. Take your time. First and last name and spell your last name, please.
My name's Mike Dagon, D-A-G-O-N. I've been a resident of Lake Havasu for 48 years. Um, my client and friend bought a piece of property that is bordered by Hickory, Walnut and Lake Havasu Avenue. It's approximately 3.5 acres and it's zone condominiums. And he called me adamantly opposed to this. And he said, will you show up? I said, of course I'll show up, you know? And I asked him why and he said, Mike, when we looked at that property, we looked at the west side and we looked at the lake, the river and the mountains. He said, then when we looked at the east side, we looked at the mountains. And he said, there was no cell tower there. And he says, I don't want a cell tower off the back of my project when I look up to the mountains. So I said, you know, here I am. I, I agree with him. I think it's wrong. If I was in the neighborhood like these people are, I'd be really upset. But I'm not, I'm in a different area. The thing that, when I'm sitting here today, look, listening to this, and I wasn't going to say anything other than what I just said, but two things struck me as very odd. When you gave your presentation on the four cell towers that were approved in other locations, you didn't have the height on any of those. And I think that's an important issue. If we're, if we're doing 50 and 60 footers over here and all of a sudden we're doing 100-foot over here, I could see why people would be upset. Because maybe the 50 or 60 foot would work with the neighborhood, maybe not 100. The second thing for me is, because I do nothing but commercial investment real estate, is there's a dollar somewhere, somebody's paying the city a lease. I'm sure it's these people here. And you can find commercial property, but you're going to pay dearly in Lake Havasu City to get it. That's the difference. So if it's a money issue, it's really something we shouldn't even be talking about. They should have to go out and find something that suits their needs and pay the fright and pay the freight and then make Verizon pay more for the tower. But if it's not, you know, I question that. And I thank you all for your service because I know what you have is a hard job here. And we need the people like you here helping us in Lake Havasu City and I hope you're going to turn this down today. And Dean just gave me this and I don't know what it is. I don't know who I give that to, but. Thank you so much, have a great day.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak to on this item? Okay, was the applicant want to answer any of those concerns from the people that spoke? You're up, you, if you want to address any of those? Comments?
Yes, sir. I know one of the gentlemen, and thank you for your service, uh, brought up again the, the health stuff. And I'll just go over this slide one more time, um, and, and kind of read this. So again, the FCC is not the only one that's done studies into this. There's the American Cancer Society, uh, the Federal Communications Commission, the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection, the World Health Organization. Um, they set the limits and, and we follow them. Um, I, I can't speak about the future, but to this point in time, we're following the guidelines they set and, and that's what we're required to do. Um, I know there was another comment similar to that. I can't think of what individual it was now, actually, and I apologize. Um, I, that, maybe that was the only question there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There seems to be a lot of issue about the money. I mean, if you think a carrier would, like Verizon or AT&amp;T would just come spend a lot of money on a site because they already have great service, that doesn't make any sense for a business to do that. So the reason they're willing to spend the money is because they know their service is not that good. They are able to collect the data, they can see what they have and they know. So they're willing to put the money out there because they know what the data says. Then secondly, I know, I understand that the view here is beautiful. One of my favorite reasons for coming over to the river, the view, right? However, uh, uses are not guaranteed a view forever. When you have neighbors, if a neighbor puts up something that on their house that you don't like, you can say, oh, I don't like that, they've got to take it down. You don't have, uh, private property rights don't exist that way. So I understand that, that the view issue, but that has to be tempered somewhat by the private property issues, uh, of the landholder.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
The height of the tower, yes, it's in a, in a lower area. That was to accommodate the existing use. It is a wastewater treatment plant. So to say that it's a pristine area, uh, might be a stretch. It's kept very well nice, it's lovely, but it's still a utility use. Um, and so putting a cell tower at an existing utility use seems to be the least intrusive uh, use for the area. you know, you could say, oh, we don't need it in the area, put it somewhere else. Well, the need is in the area. I mean, uh, there's satellite uses, there's other potential ways to get service, but that's not what all of us are using. We're using our cell phones and this is a macro site. It provides the broadest range for the area, service for the broadest range. And it also will accommodate all three of the major carriers. So it's, um, concentrating the use to one use, keeping it minimized instead of putting several different towers up over the same area.
Good. Thank you. I have a question from Miss, Miss Gary. So the applicant, or not the applicant, one of the, one of the residents mentioned they had petitions that were signed against it and then, not, some were just turned in, but are we under that 20% protest rule? Did anything get turned in prior, prior?
Mr. Chair, the protest was only applicable to a zoning map amendment. So this is a conditional use permit hearing and so as far as like a protest, there, it doesn't trigger any specific type of response. It's just, it's just a petition that they've given to you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to remind the commissioners, this is a conditional use permit, so our vote is the final vote, does not go to the city council for any further voting. Mr. Gilbert, I'm going to close the public hearing, uh, see no one else. And Mr. Gilbert, your, um, recommendation, please. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question, Chris. Well, um, in looking at the coverage, it sounds like they are not having any issues with getting their phones, running their stuff. But we, on the street, I do know there's issues with GPS and I, I've heard that the police department and fire department had some concerns that there were dead spots that when they go out on calls, especially police officers who are out there by themselves in what is really a dark city, that they may have dead zones. Is any of that applicable to this particular tower? Would that affect that in this area? Do they getting pretty good coverage from the police department that you, if you know, uh, from here? Do you know? We don't have a police officer here, so I don't know. Um, oh, yeah.
Mr. Tinaman?
Thank you. Uh, we're, um, hearing from the public safety.
We're hearing from the public safety side that these towers are going to be well welcomed with their communications. I can't tell you exactly about this tower or all three of them. We've just been communicating with fire chief, the police chief, and they're pretty excited to hear that that's coming, or possibly coming, to improve their communication. So there is an issue there, yes.
Okay. Because I know it's not always just phones, but GPS on your phone, and that's what they use on their computers, correct? They have the computers in the car that are Wi-Fi, basically, trying to tell them where they go for a call and how to get there the best way.
That's correct. And the city's cell service provider is Verizon at this time. And at the request of public safety, we have the option to co-locate on these towers as well for our own communication. So, we have that designed in the lease if this gets approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions from the commissioners?
I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Harris?
And I'm not sure who to address this question to. But have, has the applicant and the city both considered maybe an alternate location more into the center of this site? You've got a pretty good sized site here, and you're all the way down at the bottom, and I realize it's probably the easiest place for access, but if we were, you know, in the center of that site, it might be a little less obtrusive to all of the local properties.
If I may, as the applicant stated, city staff was involved in this whole process about potential locations. The applicant did propose some, like three, I want to say three or four different locations on this site. After letting our wastewater divisions, water, all of the utility supervisors and whatnot, this was the best location suited for this site due to infrastructure locations, potential improvements or expansion of the treatment plant, et cetera. This was the least impactful to the city's expansion plans for that site.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. Gilbert, your recommendation, please, staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In this particular location, as was just mentioned by Jeff, the, there are a lot of buried underground lines that come into the wastewater treatment plant, bringing effluent. And so, that impacts potential locations. And then, one of the big considerations, which is why smaller properties don't work, is when you have a tower, the tower fall zone has to be accommodated for where it doesn't fall onto buildings or into the right of way where vehicles, pedestrians could be. And so, it has to be placed in a location where you're not falling on buildings, you're not falling on streets, you don't have underground buried or above ground utilities. So there's a lot of factors that had to figure into where the best location on the site Staff recommends approval of Land Use Action 24-4161 for approval of conditional use permit to allow placement of 100-foot monopole communication structure and related 40-foot by 40-foot screened ground equipment enclosure on city-owned property located at 1867 Walnut Drive, Track 2302, Parcel A, in a single-family residential district with the following conditions. This is very important, there's five conditions here. The final plan submitted for design review shall substantially match the site plan submitted with this application. Number two, all city divisions and utility company comments listed in the staff report are to be addressed by the applicant. And there's, there's a few in there, there's not many. Number three, all development standards listed under Development Code Section 14.03.03.03B, .9, .C regarding telecommunications facilities are required to be addressed with the design review submittal documents. Number four, should all providers on the tower cease operation for a period of 90 days or more, the tower shall be removed per Development Code Section 14.03.03.03B, .9, .D within 120 days thereafter. And that was actually brought up by one of the members of the public, and that would be required by our city code. And finally, number five, the applicant shall enter into a lease agreement with the city for the requested tower site that shall be approved by the city council prior to any work commencing on the property. Mr. Chairman, that completes the recommendation portion.
All right, thank you. Does the applicant understand the recommendation with the staff?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Excuse me.
Commissioner Harris.
I have a question of Shelby. Do you have the ability to put those staff recommendations up on the screen?
I think they should be in our...
Yes. So that the public can see them?
Yeah, because we don't have them.
There. Thank you. How about if we read them again so that everybody can follow along?
The conditions or the whole thing?
Conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Condition one, the final plan submitted for design review shall substantially match the site plan submitted with this application. And that was the slide I showed previously. Number two, all city divisions and utility company comments listed in the staff report are to be addressed by the applicant. Condition three, all development standards listed under Development Code Section 14.03.03.03B, .9, .C regarding telecommunications facilities are required to be addressed with the design review submittal documents. Condition four, should all providers on the tower cease operation for a period of 90 days or more, the tower shall be removed per Development Code Section 14.03.03.03B, .9, .D within 120 days thereafter. And condition five, the applicant shall enter into a lease agreement with the city for the requested tower site that shall be approved by the city council prior to any work commencing on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Commissioner DeZerro?
This is a difficult one because of, the safety issue is of concern to me with the police department, the fire department, although what I'm seeing on the map seems to be fairly good coverage in this area right now. And listening to the residents, they seem to not have any trouble getting their coverage there. I don't, did not like, and I'm glad the one was removed, that went in the neighborhood just because trying to get trucks in there to take care of things and putting that in the neighborhood just does not, this, when I first saw it, thought was a great location to put that in. I think this does answer the one gentleman's case as to what happens to the towers if they're not used. It says they're responsible to remove it within 120 days after there's no use on it at their expense, so. But it's difficult because I, the views are important to the city, that's why a lot of us live here by the lake. But trying to keep safety balanced. So right now, it's a, it's a difficult decision, I think, on this one, on this location.
Any other comments?
I have some.
Commissioner Harris?
All right, I'm going to start out by saying, in a former career, I worked for the power company and in another community. And whenever it came time for citing power lines, cell towers, things like that, doesn't matter what community, there's always a little bit of concern and some uprising about locations and where to put things. In our particular community here, and I was on the commission back 20-plus years ago when the first cell towers came through, and there was a lot of pushback about any cell towers whatsoever in this community. It's a necessity today, and I think they've demonstrated the need. Unfortunately, the location is not as acceptable to some of the locals, or some of the local residents around the location. However, in this community, there are a lot of public parcels scattered throughout the community that we, we used to call drill sites because they were going to be waterwell sites, but they've been used for storage tanks, cell tower locations and things like this. The original cell towers that went in were, as I recall, either 85 or 90 feet tall, and those are the ones you see now around town. So the height is not that, that obtrusive in comparison. It's a difficult decision. Would I want them in my backyard? Of course not. But I think it's, it's probably a little bit of a necessity, and, you know, I would, I would opt for maybe a little more to the center of that location. But I think it's, it's a necessity for the area, especially for, for safety, you know, health and safety as far as the city is concerned. So that's all I have to say.
Any other, any other questions? Comments? All right, we're looking for a motion to either approve or disapprove. I can't do it myself.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Commissioner Harris?
I, I make the motion that we approve item number ID 244161 with staff's recommendations.
Need a second?
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Harris to approve and a second by Commissioner Wilson to approve? Any further comments or discussion?
The motion passes 4 to 3.
All right, good luck to you. All right, the next...
Do people live in this town that are putting this in?
Sir, sir, that's not proper meeting protocol. You could talk after the meeting. Thank you, sir. All right, the next item is ID number 24-4162, adopt the planning and zoning resolution number 24-03 approving issuance of a conditional use permit to allow placement of a 85-foot monopole telecommunications tower and related 40-foot by 40-foot screened ground equipment enclosure by the city hall property, on the city hall property located at 2330 McCullough Boulevard North, Track 2293, Block 3, lots 19 through 21, in a mixed-use neighborhoods slash placed to plan development, MU-N-PD. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This tower was already earlier referred to by the applicants as part of the scheme for fixing the service in this area. This was the alternate tower that was in that RF presentation. It happens to be right here where we're at. Right now, we're sitting right in this room, the tower's going to be right over here next to the parking lot, next to City Hall, Office Spazana Way. Again, the property's owned MU-N-PD, it's 15.52 acres in size. And due to the way that's, the civic center was developed, the Spazana Way coming off of Akoma up to the point where it hits the Wash is a public street, but at that point, the rest of Spazana Way down to McCullough is private. It's all part of the same city civic center property. So there's no property line there. That's important when I get to the next part of it. Well, first we'll look at this. Again, we're looking at the, the coverage issues up here, which will be resolved by this tower. So it's all a lot of blue and green, and the, the radio frequency map shows that it'll be red and green primarily. So, big upgrade for this area. Again, here you see Spazana Way hits the property line here, and then runs past the tower. That's important because the tower can be right there, which is the best location on the city hall property. But if it were to fall, it could potentially fall into the roadway, but it's not a public road, so there's no right of way there, is the point I'm trying to make. But the, the best location is right there next to the roadway, and there are some additional safety features that are being built into this one. Because unlike the previous tower, which if it fell, it would fall on just open ground, undeveloped ground at wastewater treatment facility, this one could potentially fall into a private ride roadway. And so it's being designed with like a building where if it, wind knocks it over, it'll snap and not completely fall into the roadway. To the, to the west of this site is the city parking areas, that's the shaded parking spots, and here's City Hall right here to kind of give perspective. Detail on the site, you have a roadway coming off the parking lot that will access the site. Again, it's a 40 by 40-foot enclosure. This is the existing city hall trash dumpsters here that'll piggyback off of essentially. And here's the Wash separating the city hall property from the, the commercial office building. That's across the Wash along Akoma. And then, to the south of that's the new municipal court building. So, this site, 40 by 40, a CME block wall, will also be required to have five foot of landscaping around it. And there are some comments in the staff report related to the location of some of that landscaping so that Public Works can access across the top of the Wash without This tower, because of the radio frequency details that they'll get into later, is slightly shorter than the last one. This one's proposed for 85 feet, not 100 feet. And they can explain why this one's slightly shorter than the other one when they get up in, the applicant can in their presentation. Again, going back to the, the general plan, general plan supports working with the providers to, with non-mia support service providers to improve and expand service levels, and that's exactly what's happening here. The zoning is a little bit different, it's not a residential zone, it is a mixed-use And also, the city civic center, staff's analysis finds that it meets the requirements for the approval of a new telecommunications facility. And again, there's not a whole lot more to report here since I am not a technical expert on the details of RF frequency, and the applicant is present to go over this particular site as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Gilbert? All right, is the applicant ready to make a presentation, please? Thank you.
Yes, I won't go through all of that again, but we would like to show the propagation maps to explain why this location, the need for it here. You know, we looked for, when they cite a cellphone tower, there's a very small area that they're looking at to be able to provide coverage. I mean, it has to fit within existing towers and make a network. So if it's pushed sometimes as much as a couple of hundred feet, it causes problems, and you have maybe some signal that is really not effective. So the actual location, the spot, is important to how it fits within the network, and it changes on sites based on the terrain, the proximity to buildings, because the radio signals bounce off of buildings, so, and the terrain changes. So it's, it has a sophisticated computer model that helps locate and also provide the height so you can get the best coverage, and which, in the end, limits the number of cell towers that have to be put up. So, that modeling is done by the carriers, so that, based with their, in their network, so that they know what's the best to try to minimize. So with that, I mean, I'll stop and let the engineer tell you what it's got.
Thank you.
Hello again, everyone, Tyler Ross. And this one should be for Verizon site named Indigo. And I will not give you all the pleasure of reading through all the same things again, but here is our proposed site here with a green pen. Again, in relation to the proposed site at the bottom left, yellow, and the surrounding sites, we have varying distances, but for various reasons, we can't have them too close or too far from each other. We'll get into the cell mapper data here again. Looking specifically at just this site now with this search ring, we have a lot of the dark green and a lot of the blank spots. I, I know a few of the public comment was that they have excellent... I, I know a few of the public comment was that they have excellent cell service in this area and I would like to say that is very fortunate for them, but this data does not show that for the overwhelming majority of users that are on the Verizon network. Moving through to Ucla, we have again a lot of the yellow, which, which is ideal for in-vehicle use, but then you do start seeing this dark orange and red everywhere that's only going to be useful on the streets if you're out in the open. So there's a lot of buildings here. There's not going to be a lot of penetration for indoor use or even for in-vehicle in some of these areas. As you start seeing a lot of the red in this area, again, just not going to be very ideal for indoor use here. Here is a Verizon propagated RSRP model as it is today without the site on. Once we activate the proposed site, again, we go from a lot of splotchy to yellow that would only be ideal for in-vehicle to now full indoor coverage for, for most of the rings area. And then lastly, we have the other proposed site. And actually with this one, we are all green in here, so we should see a very highly increased quality for indoor service. These are the best server coverages again, where we see which sectors of which towers are kind of pulling the weight depending on where you're at. So within this circle, again, you have all these different colors. So depending on where you're at, it could be handing off from one tower to another instantaneously and it's not going to be good for anyone as they're driving or traveling in this area. With the proposed site, we now see a much cleaner look at each sector. And with the second proposed site again. I did recall the other, one of the other public questions regarding the FCC stuff was about if Verizon's the only one now, if we had future tenants, is that going to change any of the FCC exposure or safety with RF exposure? And the answer is no. Every, every tenant follows these same guidelines. So just because we have T-Mobile or AT&amp;T, for example, added on to a tower, it doesn't compound and add together to, to make a higher unsafe exposure. Each, each level of tenant has to follow the same rules and the same guidelines. So, so as far as health and safety is concerned, it doesn't make a compounding difference just because there's more antennas. The power levels and everything still have to be followed. And outside of that, I believe a lot of this was what I already went over. This is now looking at AT&amp;T in this area for Indigo. And again, you have a lot of the dark green, a lot of orange and red here, which again is, is going to equate to a phone that's not going to be ideally used in indoor settings. A lot of blank spaces here, which means that we're not even getting reads on AT&amp;T users in these areas. And then T-Mobile, similar situation, a lot of dark green, a lot of open spaces where we're just not even getting readings. And the orange and yellow again, where we're not seeing any ideal indoor use in this area. And the dark red and open spaces again for T-Mobile. With that, are there any questions for me before?
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay. I think we're good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open up the public on this. Anyone from the public like to address the commission on this? Yes? First and last name and let's spell your last name.
Matthew Mitchell, M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L. Just a question, does this tower also have the availability to have all of the carriers on it? Same as the last tower or is this only for Verizon?
The applicant is shaking her head yes. Thank you. Any other, anyone from the public like to address the commission on this? No, all right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to Mr. Gilbert for your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the slide up this time. I apologize the last time. Staff recommends approval of land use action 24-4162 and adoption of resolution number 24-03 approving a conditional use permit to allow placement of an 85-foot monopole telecommunications structure and related 40-foot by 40-foot screened ground equipment enclosure on city-owned property located at 2330 McCullough Boulevard North, tract 2293, block three lots 19 through 21, in a mixed-use neighborhood planned development. That's a MUN/PD district with the following conditions. Number one, the final plan submitted for design review shall substantially match the site plan submitted with this application. Number two, all city divisions and utility company comments listed in the staff report are to be addressed by the applicant. Condition number three, all development standards listed under Development Code Section 14.03.03.03B.9. Point C regarding telecommunications facilities are required to be addressed with the design review submittal documents. Condition four, should all providers on the tower cease operation for a period of 90 days or more, the tower shall be removed per Development Code Section 14.03.03.03B.9. Point D within 120 days thereafter. And condition five, the applicant shall enter into a lease agreement with the city for the requested tower site that shall be approved by the city council prior to any work commencing on the property. Mr. Chairman completes the staff findings recommendation.
Thank you. The applicant understands staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Any further questions or comments from the commissioners on this? Commissioner DeZerro?
Unlike the last one, this one I think is actually a perfect location for a cell tower. You could get in to take care of it. It's not going to block anyone's views where it's commercial property down here. So I think this is kind of great and it's going to help with the coverage for the police, which I am really concerned about. My husband's retired police and I know what it's like for them to be out by themselves at dark and you need help. And if your radio's not working, it's pretty scary. So I'm glad we can put, I would like to put this one in here because I think this is a good location for that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? All right, seeing none, looking for a motion? Commissioner DeZerro?
I make a motion that we approve ID 24-4162, adopt a planning and zoning commission resolution number 2403 approving issuance of a conditional use permit to allow placement of an 85-foot monopole telecommunications structure and related 40-foot by 40-foot screened ground equipment enclosure on the city hall property located at 2330 McCullough Boulevard North, tract 2293, block three, lots 19 through 21, in a mixed-use neighborhood planned development, MUN-PD district with the staff recommendations one through five that were listed.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner DeZerro. We have a second. We have a second by Commissioner Medley. Any further discussion? Okay, we are ready to vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good luck to you. All right, the next item is ID number 24-4152, request to amend the parking and common master plan for 3367, 3373, 3377, and 3381 Maricopa Avenue, tract 2217, block 18, lots 29, lots 30 and 31 and 32, removing the property from the master plan. Mr. Trevor Kearns, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners? The subject property is located on Maricopa Avenue between Lobo Drive and Pecos Drive. An alley abuts the rear of the property. Highway 95 is to the south across Maricopa Avenue. Subject property and the abutting lots to the west and east are zoned commercial Southgate District and developed as commercial uses. The property to the north across the alley are zoned residential Southgate District and are vacant lots. The original parking and common master plan for block 18 includes lots 27 through 36. The lots in this block are 250 feet deep. The parking and common master plan calls for a 10-foot landscape buffer along the Maricopa Avenue frontage, 120-foot front parking setback and a 20-foot rear parking setback from the alley, resulting in a buildable depth of 100 feet. Other properties within this block have already been removed from the parking and common master plan. Lots 27 and 28 were removed from the master plan to allow sales displays in the parking area. The applicant's letter of intent requests to amend the parking and common master plan by removing the subject lots from the plan to allow outdoor display and provide the required parking for future development. If removed from the parking and common master plan, all required parking for any proposed uses of the properties shall be provided on the subject lots and the spaces may be reserved for their customers and employees. Use of the parking and common area on other lots is not allowed. Any new structures will still be limited to the 100-foot buildable area of the lot as shown on the, on the master plan. A parking common amendment application requires initial agreement from a minimum of 75% of the owner's property with, properties within the block. The applicant submitted approvals, including himself, for five of six property owners for 83% within the block. Staff received no objections to the request from any review agencies. With approval, staff's recommended conditions are, one, the development shall substantially match the site plan submitted with this application. Two, design review to ensure compliance with all applicable city codes, including driveway locations and parking, is required prior to development of the properties. Three, combine the properties into a single parcel. Condition three, the applicant has already started that process. This concludes staff's presentations. Presentation, if you have any questions, and the applicant's also available.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners on this item? Do the staff? All right, seeing none, the applicant-
You know what? I do have a question.
Commissioner Harris?
Sorry. Is the applicant proposing to delineate the difference between the two parkings, parking in common and their private parking? And if so, how? I see palm trees.
Yeah, for his site plan, I think he's got, yeah, palm trees. Maybe he can better explain what the line, if that's a property line or maybe a fence.
Okay. Right. Looks, looks like that's the case. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Applicant like to address the commission on this? They're present? Okay, thank you. Please state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record.
Johnny Mathiasen, M-A-T-H-I-A-S-E-N. I'm sorry, the question was about the palm trees or the parking?
Well, I just wondered if you were going to segregate the, your parking from the, the rest of the parking in common?
No, I plan on parking right in front of the store there, so it won't be segregated.
No, I mean, is there, is there going to be a boundary between your parking lot-
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, there'll be a fence around it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open up to the public on this. Anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to staff's recommendations.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action number 24-4152, an amendment to the parking and common master plan for 3367, 3373, 3377, and 3381 Maricopa Avenue, tract 2217, block 18, lot 29, 30, 31, and 32, removing the properties from the master plan with the following conditions. One, the development shall substantially match the site plan submitted with this application. Two, design review to ensure compliance with all applicable city codes, including driveway locations and parking, is required prior to development of the properties. Three, combine the properties into a single parcel. That concludes staff's recommendation and conditions.
Thank you. Does the applicant understand the staff's recommendation? Thank you. Any further comments or questions from commissioners? All right, if not, seeing none, looking for a motion?
I make a motion-
Commissioner Wilson?
To approve land use action 24-4152 with staff's recommendations.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we're ready to vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good luck to you. All right, the last item on the agenda is ID 24-4167, a request to amend the general development plan for plan development number 00-07, Heat Hotel, 1420 McCullough Boulevard North, Bridgewater Channel, in a mixed-use neighborhood slash planned development, MU-N-PD district to permit the conversion of the outdoor bar and patio and the underbridge retail suites into eight new guest rooms. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me advance this one slide here. This particular application involves the Heat Hotel, who I'm sure everyone's familiar with, been there about a quarter century. Over the years, in 2003, 2007, and 2018, they have done amendments to their general development plan to convert different portions of the property that was originally, had a lot more different mixing uses into additional hotel suites. This time they're coming back to, as stated in the report, they attempted to do that previously and it was not approved. This time they're coming back attempting to convert the, the final commercial spaces into hotel suites as, in kind of a, it's a two-phase type effort where the, initially the two under the bridge would be the first phase and the second phase would be the outdoor bar and patio. Give you some basic information on the property here. It's MUN-PD zoned. It's approximately two acres in size overall and they have 368 feet of, of channel frontage. The, to orient everybody with, with kind of what's in the area, to the south of the Heat Hotel are condominiums, which were previously spun off by the, the heat development. So these are individually owned units. And then you have the Havelina Cantina, which is right here. And then to the north across McCullough, you have a large number of commercial shopping center, small shopping center and tight businesses and eateries. So it's a highly commercialized area. You have the state land right here. You have the city parking lot for, leading to the beach. And then you have the, the, the channel walk through here and the docks for the Heat Hotel. So that kind of orients it. One of the reasons that they're wanting to convert the last of their, of their units is because there's so much commercial already in the area and they're not, it's no longer really a viable, successful option for them. And on page three of four of the staff report, under the general plan goals and policies, there's GM.1.1.1D from the general plan that supports infill development and the assemblage of small lots, redevelopment of underutilized properties or obsolete uses, and the adaptive reuse of vacant structures. So there's a lot of general plan support for reutilizing properties that aren't realizing their full potential. And in this particular situation, there appears to be just so much in the area that, that the options are not as feasible for the applicant when they met with us. And so they want to continue to develop the property in a manner that they have proven to be successful at. So what this would do, and let me advance this one more slide here. Here's the proposed development plan amendment for the Heat Hotel. You can see the bar patio area is highlighted right here. Here's the underbridge to commercial suites that would become two hotel suites. These would be converted into six hotel suites right here where the outdoor bar patio is. And let's see, the parking calculations are included right here. The, as you can imagine, commercial uses have a much higher parking demand than hotel occupancies. So the parking demand calculations at the bottom, 71 spaces total provided, 64 required plus three RV. And that is, that is accommodated on the property. And that is accommodated on the property. The Havelina Cantina is approximately 3,800 square feet in size, and they do have the outdoor deck. Both combined, they have 22 parking spaces committed to their property. Both their outdoor seating area and their indoor seating area combined are less than the maximum they could reach, where the 22 parking spaces would not want to be sufficient. So all the uses are accommodated with the parking that's provided on this sliver. And again, that's this entire area right here. So there's no required parking that cannot be fit on the property with this conversion. And, Mr. Chairman, that completes, that completes, oh, one last thing. They're increasing the total number of units from residential units from hotel motel units from 29 to 37 with this. And that will be their max build out number, it appears. The applicant will go into more detail on what, if they have future plans to adding more in the future. But I think that would create, potentially create some issues with parking if they did. But for now, their parking numbers add up. And that completes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments to the Commissioner on this? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant here and would like to address the Commission? Please state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record.
Hello, Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your presentation. My name is Ivan Betancourt, last name B-E-T-A-N-C-O-U-R-T. I work for Selberg Associates Architecture Firm here in town. We're representing the applicant, Heat Hotel. As we assisted with the application and we're doing the plans for the remodel, taking place below the bridge currently at that existing commercial building. What I would say pretty much echoes what Chris Gilbert mentioned. That existing building is underutilized. It's been vacant for the better part of, I would say, four to six months. It was most recently, from what I understand, a chocolate and fudge cafe under the name of Kelly's. I don't know how long ago that was. I personally have never been there. And their outdoor bar area is underutilized as well. It's more of a seasonal, you know, seasonal use for them. So that's why they're looking at converting these areas into new rooms. And, yeah, we would reiterate that it is an existing building for those first two units, and it would be a new single-story structure taking place at that outdoor bar area. And that's all we have to add.
Okay, great. I do have one question, maybe either one can answer. So there's underground parking underneath Javelina Cantina, and then there's the outdoor parking. So you're saying nothing has to be done between the two properties? They have enough parking to accommodate this remodel?
They have enough to accommodate the remodel and all the uses that are on the property. The numbers add up-
Currently, they do.
For all, including Havelina Cantina, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, hold on. Any questions from the Commissioners? Mr. Stevenson?
So Ivan, isn't there six existing suites there in that area?
At the channel level?
Where, in the gray area, in that bar area, isn't there six suites there that border that parking lot existing? So are we adding a building in front of those?
There is. At the outdoor bar area, there is a utility structure. I believe it's some restrooms there. That's all that's currently there, while the remainder is some shade canopies for that outdoor bar area. Below that, at the channel level, there are what used to be commercial units as well that were converted back a few years ago as well. But they're currently in that gray shaded area. The only building there is that utility structure.
And so you're going to-
We're going to demo that.
Demo that and-
Yep, demo that and those shade canopies and, you know, create six new units.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone from the public like to address the Commission on this item? Yes, sir. First and last name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Hello, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. My name is Mike DeFreeze, D-E-F-R-E-E-S. I reside at 1420 North McCullough Boulevard, Unit 102. So I live within the Southgate Condominium Association, the development that's before you. I attended the initial meeting at Selberg Associates and expressed my concerns at that meeting as well. There is a Southgate Condominium Association, which is managed by the bylaws and recorded CCNRs. And any change, the original development approval in this case requires approval by the Association Board and all the condo unit owners. In pursuant to the bylaws and CCNRs, in Article 2.3, requires a meeting to be held by the Board and the owners to vote on all matters in order to modify the original development plan approval. There are many common area concerns associated with extra hotel units, of which we'd like to talk about and discuss, you know, in this meeting. The same approval consent that's required by the condominium association was also required by me in a previous application that I submitted to Lake Havasu City staff. And their recommendation was to obtain approval from the Southgate Condominium Association in order to move that application forward, in order to take it before the Planning Commission. Therefore, we're all here today before this application, but the application is obviously, you know, premature, as they did not call for a meeting before the Board and the condominium unit owners for some reason. We're just not sure at this case. While I changed some emails with the Heat Hotel representatives, you know, they were claiming, you know, something different. But for some reason, in any case, Association is always involved in this decision-making process, because this is a big impact to us, since we live right next to the Heat Hotel on the property. We want to help them. We want to help the Heat Hotel be successful, because it's important to us to exist where they're at today and be profitable. And we want that to occur. But we obviously still want to be at the table with them to discuss this, to see if there's even a better plan. And we all face, you know, major parking issues every single day, because in this case, we have the Heat Hotel where their peak hours are in the evenings, and the Havelina Cantina, their peak parking requirements are in the evening as well. And so there's, you know, while, you know, sometimes it appears code is met, you know, from a developer perspective, sometimes you really need a lot more parking. Sometimes, maybe even one and a half or two times more, because people are parking, you know, where they shouldn't be parking, and it's quite a mess. And there's other common areas that are strained that need to be talked about, just simply, you know, as I mentioned, you know, the parking trash. And obviously, you know, structural needs to be looked at to see if they can stack another story on top of where the bar area is today. And that wasn't discussed today either. And that's probably super important, because, you know, obviously, the concrete of footings underneath the first structure aren't appropriate, and they can't stack into the story. So for those reasons, I would request that this Planning Commission meeting would be continued until first, they hop to the first step process that's proper to come before the Association meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public like to address the Commission on this item? Would the applicant like to answer some of his concerns?
So I understood one of the concerns was parking. Mike, or Mr. DeFreeze can correct me if I'm wrong. I understood that those condominiums had their own parking area, just based on the existing site plan we had and looking at the aerial that's available, you know, just on Google Maps. So I don't, we don't anticipate any concern there as far as parking. And I don't recall that we included that in the overall parking calculation that we put together. As far as structural concerns for building the new six units on that bar top, you know, we have approached a structural engineer, you know, that they would analyze the existing drawings we have on file. Luckily, the city did, or the city does have the original construction documents from when the Heat Hotel was built, so we have a substantial amount of information that we can use to justify that it is structurally capable of holding those six units. And as far as any association concerns, we understand that to be more real estate matter, not so much a Planning and Zoning Commission matter. But if there's any additional information that we can work with the applicant to provide, you know, we can send anything by email electronically after this meeting. But, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone from the Commission, I mean, sorry, from the public like to address anything further before I close the public? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to staff for your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that we don't enforce private deed restrictions, for example, HOA restrictions that he's referring to. So they will have to work that out privately. And that is something that if the Planning Commission wants to note as an added condition possibly, that they work with the HOA to get written approval of their plans. That's something that could be considered, I believe. But, let me advance the slides here. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the City Council of Item Number 24-4167, amending the general development plan for Plan Development Number 00-07, the Heat Hotel located at 1420 McCullough Boulevard North, to permit the conversion of the outdoor bar and patio and the underbridge retail suites into eight new guest rooms with the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall complete a sewer lift station capacity study for the current facility. The cost of any improvements to the sewer lift station identified by the study in the study are to be borne by the applicant. Number two, all rough runoff from the new development, including the upstairs bar deck and surface runoff, cannot directly connect to the Bridgewater Channel. And condition number three, the development conducted on the site shall be in substantial compliance with the general development plan at all times. Minor changes necessary to meet utility company or city public works department engineering requirements shall not be considered as substantial changes. The normal, the normal timing to council is about a month, so that gives them time to work those issues out prior to the City Council hearing. So that's something I can recommend both to the applicant and the adjoining HOA to use that time wisely. That completes my findings and recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant understand the recommendations and the other items? Okay, conditions. So any questions on the recommendation from the staff, from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr.-
And I would address this to Ms. Gary as well. The Speaker's concern about the condo association and everything, and as Mr. Gilbert underscored, that is a civil matter, not pertinent to this decision being considered here today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Having said that, then-
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I would like to add to that if I could. The Speaker did talk about coming in for some docs and staff, saying that the HOA did have to get involved. The reason that is, is because this change that is in front of us today is not affecting the common areas, so the plat doesn't have to be changed. So when he came in for the docs that attached or was amending the common area, therefore, the HOA needed to get involved to revise that plat. So that's that aspect of it. And as Ms. Gary said, as far as the HOH and getting approvals on their platted area, that's their area, that's a private matter between those parties. So just wanted to add that info.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ID Number 244167 with staff's recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Harris with a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good luck to you. Thank you. All right, that was the last item on the agenda, so now I'm going to open it to the call to the public. The call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission about a topic that is not on today's agenda. We are unable to respond directly or have a two-way conversation. If you would like to speak, please approach the podium and spell your last name for the record. Does anyone from the public like to address the Commission at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the call to the public. Mr. Gilbert, any further future meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have a scheduled, regular scheduled meeting on March 20th. At the present, there's only a single item. It's another parking in common amendment to come before you. And then we have a couple items at least for April 3rd. So it's, we're going to try to, going forward, to manage the caseload a little better before you, so that we don't have as many items at the same time like this. Try to hold it to three or less.
We were waiting for lunch to come.
Yeah, we're fine.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's fine. A good meeting. Thank you very much. That's it. All right, thank you. With that, nothing said, I'm going to close the meeting. This is adjourned.